Evening, everyone. My name's Larry Shuts and I'm the moderator for the Bennington School District Incorporated. And at this time, I'm going to ask for the board members to my left to start by introducing themselves and then to the right. George Sleben, Bennington School District.
Meredith Capella, Bennington School District.
Jackie Kelly, Bennington School District.
Chela Sikora, Bennington School District.
Chris Murphy, Bennington School District Chair.
Jackie Peru, Bennington School District.
Dan Mox, Bennington School District.
Should we call KNS to issue supercharge? Thank you. Okay. The warning for the annual meeting. The legal voters of Bennington School District Incorporated are hereby warned to meet at the Bennington Firehouse on River Street, Bennington, Vermont on Monday, March 5th, at 6:45 o'clock in the evening to transact the following business from the floor. Article one, to accept the reports of the district officers for the preceding year as reported in the annual report. Article two, to establish the annual salaries of the district officers as follows. Moderator, $100. District clerk, $1,000. School directors, $1,200 each. And the treasurer, $23,175. Article three, to authorize the school board to borrow money in anticipation of tax revenues to meet current operating expenses of the district for the 2018-2019 school year. Article four, to authorize school board to transfer and expend funds from the established and audited capital reserve fund for capital expenses. Article five, to hold a public informational meeting on articles to be voted upon by Australian ballot on March 6, 2018. And article seven, to transact any other business found proper when met. Article one, to accept the reports of the district officers for the preceding year as reported in the annual report. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Yeah, it's Sean Murray's got her hand up.
Yes, Sean Murray, I'm sorry.
Is there any discussion on this?
Sure. I guess.
So, I apologize if you were here for the Mount Anthony meeting, but I would just like to say, in the annual report...
Can you put that forward, please, please? Thank you.
In the annual report, it talks about the quality of education and the demographics in the annual report. And in this year's annual report, I do not see any of what was in previous years in terms of this... These kind of layouts were in previous annual reports in terms of demographics, both, you know, the superintendent, the chair, the reports reflect the challenges and the things happening, but there's actually no data, other than financial, at a glance, in the annual report. So, I just... Unless somebody would like to talk about what's happening in the BSD, it's not actually in the report.
No to that?
So, no response. Thank you.
So noted. Okay. Thank you. Article two.
We did a poll.
Oh. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
There's a few.
Yeah.
So, nays, ah, yeses, one more time?
Aye.
Okay. And the nays?
Nay.
Okay. The ayes have it. Okay. Okay. To establish the annual salaries of the district officers as follows. Moderator, $100. District clerk, $1,000. School district, $1,200 each. And the treasurer, $23,175. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Second over. Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Article three, to authorize the school board to borrow monies in anticipation of tax revenues to meet current operating expenses of the district for the 2018-2019 school year. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion?
Second.
Yeah. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So moved. Article four, to authorize the school board to transfer and expend funds from the established and audited capital reserve funds for capital expenses. Motion? Motion? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Is there any anticipated capital expense?
Well, let's check on it. For the gentleman. Or maybe...
The major capital expenses repairs were done this year, the energy plant, but there is plans to continue pending costs over a stagnant period of time to continue to replace the rest of the windows at Bennington Elementary.
That's also roof repair. Roof repair. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So carried. Article five, to hold a public informational hearing on articles to be voted upon by Australian ballot on March 6, 2018. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion?
That gentleman.
Okay, yes, please.
Ned Perkins, Bennington. Again, as with the MAU budget, I tried to find the detail at WW SVSU and I couldn't find it. So, if for next year we could be more transparent, that'd be very helpful. Question on the quick budget here. General instruction is going down $219,000 and administration is going up $587,000. Could you explain, please?
Looking to refer to Jim on that, please.
Are you on budget, Jim?
Yeah.
It's on page eleven.
Your question was, general instruction is down?
The variance in general instruction is negative $219,917.
It's mainly savings in health insurance, the contract that was negotiated.
You're putting into the mic.
It's a renegotiated contract that resulted in savings in health insurance and that would have been... So, that's salary and benefits in that category.
So, your benefits for the teachers have gone down $219,000?
The cost of it, yeah.
And the administration has gone up $587,000?
There's been a shift of some cost into the SVSU paraeducators that was in the school budget, is now in the SVSU budget. And that SVSU assessment is in the administration portion of your budget. So, it's a shift of the funding source of paraeducators, which again, was a result of negotiations.
So, where would I see the offset for that?
It's in the reduction of the paraeducators at the school itself. They're no longer paid by... In the new fiscal year, there'll be employees of the SU, so their salaries will be in the SU assessment to BSD and that is in the administration portion.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So, Ned beat me to the... I'm Sean Murray-Oler from Bennington. Ned beat me to the mic. Ned, so I just... If you could be a little clearer in terms of the six hundred... The almost $600,000 or over half a million increase in administration, because what you just explained is that the decrease of 200 in the general instruction has to do with the pairs, but pairs at the local level were funded by the BSD.
Decrease is health insurance for all employees, teachers, administrators, and pairs. And the increase you... Increase that you see in the administration cost is the negotiations for paraeducators shift who employs them. So, all pairs are now going to be employees of the SVSU. So, the assessment to Bennington on the SVSU has gone up.
So, for transparency's sake, none of us vote on... None of the public votes on the SU budget. It would be really helpful if the SU budget was available for people to see, so how that streams down to the various districts. One of the things I mentioned at the last SU meeting was that there was a difference of almost a million dollars in grants received and expended. And while some may argue that those are tax dollars and they're saving somebody, they're grants that came into this district to be used for... Mostly for our students in those two categories. And if we were able to see the SU budget, we might have a better understanding of how things work. So, and the other... My other question has to do with the audit. So, every year, the school district is required by statute to do an audit. And I'm wondering if your audit's been done prior to... Has the board voted on the audit that it was done prior to the voting on the budget for next year?
We do not have the audit back from the auditor.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you need to vote on Article five? All those in favor? Okay. Article five. That's what I just asked. Okay, yeah. Okay, I apologize. Article five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Article six, to transact any other business found proper when met. Motion? Motion? Thank you. Second?
No, no, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone.
So, I wanted to talk about... So, you just said something that concerned me a little bit about...
What's his name?
I'm sorry. I'm John Conner. I live in Bennington. I actually have two kids in the school district, but at SVSU, not in Ben... Not in Ben El. But, so...
Can you speak into the mic?
Sure. I turned around if they let me, but anyway. So, as I mentioned, I have two kids in school in Bennington. And I'm concerned about what I see overall in government. And I know some of these folks here, by the way, and I like some of these folks here, I've met them before. But it seems like there's an overall attitude, if you will, or kind of a shield where I think you all think that you know what's best for the residents of Bennington and you don't really ask us first. And I'm talking specifically, at least I'm going to start talking specifically, about a friend of mine. His name is Jerry O'Connor. And I never had kids in Ben El, so I can't tell you what kind of an educator he was. I'd leave that to his former boss, Jim Law. I think he said it pretty good in the paper the other day. But I do know that Jerry was kind. He was a great listener. He volunteered all the time, really cared about the kids in the school. Just to give you one example, he's been running the... Him and a couple of guys have been running this MIA program strictly on a volunteer basis for forever, seems like. I mean, his youngest kid's either senior... He's almost ready to graduate college. I mean, his kids aren't even in that program anymore. Haven't been for years, decades, actually. You know, when they had a situation where they had two teams just recently, I think it was fifth grade boys, nobody wanted to step up and coach. Jerry was already coaching one team, in addition to his only... His other admin duties, all on a volunteer basis. And he stepped up to do it. He said, "Sure, I'll do it." It's the kind of person Jerry is. I don't... I've talked to a lot of people from that school, and I haven't met one yet, and maybe I will tonight because I'm speaking up for him, that disliked Jerry or the kind of person that he was or the kind of educator he was. So, I don't know what happened. I don't know if it was a disagreement with going a new direction or what, and maybe they decided to get rid of some of the old blood and wanted new blood. I don't know. No one's really explained that to the public, and I hope they do at some point. I really do, because it gets to the trust issue. My trust issue with the school is now we're going to this new grading system and we're implementing a piecemeal. And while it may be a great system, like most things with government, and I've worked in government about 28 years, so I know a little bit about it, it's a great ruiner of good ideas in the execution. If you don't execute this grading system across the board, or at least from an entire class, you are going to be hurting the kids that are in that system right now, like my kids. They will be at a disadvantage when it comes to GPAs, which has to do with competing for things like academic scholarships in college. That's a fact. This piecemeal, while we figure it out, isn't going to work. We're already putting ourselves at a disadvantage by being out in front of the rest of the schools in Vermont. And because if we're the first ones out there, our entire... All the kids that are in that system are going to be at a disadvantage with those kids from other schools. And then when you take it to outer state, they're not going to know how to do this system. They don't know. So, to me, it gets back to the trust issue, transparency, talking about what's really going on and being accountable for it. That's it. That's what I had to say. Thank you for my time.
Thank you.
Good evening. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Morgan Flynn. I'm the senior class president of Mount Anthony Union High School, and I'm here to represent the majority of Mount Anthony's student body, as well as the Bennington concerned taxpayers. We're here in support of Bennington Elementary School's Vice Principal Jerry O'Connor. After hearing your decision to oust O'Connor from his position a few weeks ago, there's been a tremendous amount of town voters who have shown their support for Jerry O'Connor. I now have over 430 Bennington resident signatures for Mr. O'Connor's contract to be renewed. On top of the 430 signatures from town residents, I also have over 150 signatures from high school students who attend Mount Anthony. On both petitions, it clearly states, "We, the people, feel that Jerry O'Connor's contract should be renewed. We encourage the Bennington School Board and the superintendent to reconsider this decision." When meeting with students to gain signatures, I encourage in many conversations on how Jerry O'Connor has impacted their lives, whether it's been through athletics, academics, or administration. Students consistently describe the great lengths that he would go through in order to ensure their success. Many have stated that Mr. O'Connor's treatment is unethical and morally wrong. They are outraged by this decision and the BSD and superintendent made not to renew his contract. Fellow townspeople, and I feel that this board has no hard evidence against Jerry O'Connor, and if they're attempting to remove him for low test scores, this board and these superintendents should not only look at the teachers and the administrators, but the parents of the childrens in our community. You cannot simply blame the faculty for students' low test scores or how well they learn. There are many factors to put into perspective as to why these scores are the way they are. I would be more than happy to answer any of your questions any of the board members or superintendents have for me. You may contact me by reaching me through the high school. Please, please, do the right thing for this community. We need him. However, if we can't have Jerry O'Connor as the Bennington Elementary School Assistant Principal, we should consider moving him in to be the principal of Mount Anthony Union High School. [applause] Mr. Moderator, do I have permission to present these signatures to the chairman?
Absolutely.
Hi. My name is Chris Mayer, for those of you who do not know me. I am currently a junior at the high school, and I serve on many committees and clubs. Some of the committees and clubs are Secretary General of the United Nations, member of the Student Senate, and Act 77 Explorers Committee, along with many subcommittees that come with it. On top of my clubs and committees, I also play three sports, football, wrestling, and lacrosse. I was previously my class treasurer for my freshman and sophomore years as well. I'm here tonight, along with my friend, Morgan Flynn, to discuss the concerning decision not to renew Jerry O'Connor's contract as Vice Principal of Bennington Elementary. I'm here tonight to represent not only my fellow students, but also taxpayers. Since the decision to not renew Mr. O'Connor's contract has been made public, many students, as well as community members, have come out to show their support for Mr. O'Connor. Petitions have been signed, peaceful protests have been demonstrated, all of which brings me here tonight. We, the students and community members, are calling on you, the school board, to reverse your decision and have him back. Many former students have shared stories about how amazing Mr. O'Connor was, not only as a principal, but as a coach, mentor, teacher, and role model. I hope we can all agree that any decision made should be made to further our students, not only in their education, but also their educational experiences. Outseeing Mr. O'Connor would be a decision made without the interest of the students at heart. There is no denying that test scores are lower than what we would expect and hope for our district, but blaming an administrator is no way to fix these. And as we are all aware, or I hope we are all aware, standardized tests are not the most accurate way to demonstrate a student's growth within the classroom. Many factors can also influence the reason why scores are low. The simple fact that our town and towns around are in poverty is a reason why test scores can be low. The fact that the high school, and the high school alone, teachers are given only two boxes of tissues for an entire year. Not that tissues or lack thereof are the reason for low test scores, but the fact that we can't even supply tissues year-round shows that that's the problem, and we should be working to fix that problem, not the problem of filling a position of principal when we have a well and able man to do so. I know that people as well are also very frustrated with the issue of principals. With the previous principal at the high school having to be bought out of her position, the high school has been stuck with an acting principal. Not that she's a bad fit, she is a good fit. But the fact that she has to do two positions, the directing... The director of the curriculum for the district, as well as the acting principal of the high school, is just not fair. This year has proven that we have a lack of able people and willing people to be principal. And if Bennington Elementary is without one, it will be left in chaos. Chaos, which they will be, and cause their students to be having lower scores due to the lack of a cement foundation. That is why we need to leave Mr. O'Connor alone, give him back his position, and renew his contract. So now, I am calling on you, the select board, to make the right decision. Listen to us, the voters who have voted you into the very seats you are sitting in right now. We thought that you had our interests in mind, but you have made a wrong decision, one that can be fixed. We are trying to correct the wrong. Hear us, fix this problem, and renew Mr. O'Connor's contract as Vice Principal of Bennington Elementary School. Thank you.
If I could just interject one second?
Sure.
In the interest of time, if we could keep our comments a little bit shorter, obviously...
My comments are shorter.
Okay. And also, I just want to reiterate that the school board meeting on Wednesday night at Molly Stark is pretty much devoted to this entire concept or this question, so just so you're all aware of that, too, okay?
Yes, thank you. My name is Nikki Forrest. I am the Library Media Specialist at Bennington Elementary School, and I'm here not to address the board, but to address the residents of Bennington, so that you know, and for the sake of transparency, that the faculty and staff of Bennington Elementary stand behind Mr. O'Connor and his commitment to our school and your children 100 percent. We recently conducted an agency of education survey at our school amongst the faculty and staff and had 97 percent participation. Very specifically, it was general competencies for school administrators, very specifically for Mr. O'Connor. We are completely thrilled with the 97 percent participation rate, and of the 16 questions that were asked on the survey, the results ranged between an 86 and 100 percent return, aggregated return on the questions. We have requested a meeting with the Chair of the BSD Board by email this afternoon to go over this data and are awaiting his response. I have eight pages of comments that were in addition to the survey that I'm going to be giving the Chair when we meet with him. And we would... I'm just going to ask for something very specific. We want our Assistant Principal's contract renewed. He is an advocate for your children and is asset to Bennington Elementary School and is resident of Bennington and the BSD Board. That's what we would like to have. We'd like to have you reconsider and renew his contract, because your children's education is at stake. Thank you.
I'm here to thank George for his years... His many years of service on the BSD Board. I'm here to thank George for his many years of service on the BSD Board. I didn't hear it noted that it is... He is not running. I know it's been in the paper, but thank you, George.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
Absolutely.
I'm Jerry O'Connor, so I feel deeply honored by...
Jerry, Jerry, can you come to the mic?
I just want to speak from here. I'm speaking very loudly, okay?
Thank you.
All I ever really wanted was a chance to prove to them that I could do this job from last year. I think that I have. I wasn't given the opportunity to be with the whole board, but with a couple people separately. And I think if they really got to know the man, they would have made a better, sounder decision, all right? I spent many years, I went into education 22 years before I made a difference when my kids were young, and that's all I want to do. But Ben El is my family, my neighborhood, my kids went there. I'm dedicated to that building. You never gave me a chance. You didn't get to know me, and I don't want this to be animosity at all. All I want is to be able to come back to Bennington. I want this all to be over, and I just want to do my job. [applause]
Okay. Any other things to discuss? Okay. Vote on Article six, then, to transact any other business? Anything else on that? Any other business? Okay. Okay. So, further, the legal voters of Bennington School District Incorporated are hereby warned further to meet at the Bennington Firehouse on River Street, Bennington, Vermont on Tuesday, March 6, 2018, when the polls will be open from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 in the evening to transact business by Australian ballot as follows. In Article one tomorrow, to elect from the legal voters of the district, two school directors, each for a term of three years, beginning immediately. In Article B, shall the voters of the school district approve the school board to expend $13,751,471, which is the amount of the school... That the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuring fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spendings of $14,120 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 1.2 percent higher than the spending in the current year. Any other things to discuss? Okay? Vote on Article six, then, to transact any other business, anything else on that? Any other business? Okay? So, further, the legal voters of Bennington School District Incorporated are hereby warned further to meet at the Bennington Firehouse on River Street, Bennington, Vermont on Tuesday, March 6, 2018, when the polls will be open from 7 o'clock in the, in the morning till 7 o'clock in the evening to transact business by Australian ballot as follows. In Article one tomorrow, to elect from the legal voters of the district, two school directors, each for a term of three years, beginning immediately. In Article B, shall the voters of the school district approve the school board to expend $13,751,471, which is the amount of the school, that the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuring fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $14,120 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 1.2 percent higher than the spending in the current year. Anything, anything further?
Closing for George.
Second? All those in favor? Anybody? Thank you.